Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's City of Sierra Falls Committee of the Hole for Monday, May 19th. Madam Clerk, call the order, please, and, excuse me, call the order. Roll call.
Schultz.
Here.
Latta.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Hawbaker.
Here.
Gienfield.
Here.
Crispin.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And first item, we have downtown parking quarterly report, and Marcy from the team doing this. And so we have these on two separate items, but first, Marcy, we've been doing some tracking of the actual parking counts for the last, probably, what, six months or so, since December, to look at the actual counts, different times of the day, different times of the week, for evenings and weekdays. And so first thing, we just wanted to get everyone the information and give speed where we've been at the last couple of months, and take it away. I'm not looking for any action on this at this point. We'll get to that in the second parking discussion. We get two of them.
So this will just be presentation of the quarterly report. So why are we here? Since July 2024, city staff has conducted community Main Street Board and stakeholder meetings. We've negotiated purchase of the US Bank site and continued collecting monthly downtown parking counts as directed by council, leading up to our meeting today. As recommended at the July 15, 2024 Committee of the Hole meeting, this is a quarterly report on the downtown parking counts to be included in a biannual report. So as you can see, the first slide here is the average weekday occupancy by zone. So the weekday dates and times reflected are there on the list. And as you can see, the coloring will, the legend up there tells you what the percentage is from those. That next slide is the average evening and weekend occupancy by zone. And again, the dates and times are listed there with the legend showing the percentages.
If I make quick, Marcy, there is, in the handouts I have in front of you, and in the outline at the end of this, there is the actual parking count for each count, so you can kind of see spot by spot where the spots are full at.
And I made them a little bit bigger, so they're easier to see. This slide five is the parking count details. So you'll see there just a breakdown of the date and time, and then the overall averages for those areas. And then we also added a column at the end there for the overall average of all the zones. As given to us from the parking consultant, or excuse me, the consultant, yeah, the parking consultant, Fishback, they provided the below guidelines at the June 17, 2024 Committee of the Hole meeting. They presented and recommended regular parking counts, and to monitor the financial situation, adjust, and plan for changes. So that's what we're reflecting there. The baseline targets recommended by the parking consultant, when the core of the downtown is regularly over 80%, parking occupancy, you should be planning to add parking, meaning, you know, seeking sites, selecting funding tools, preparing council for tough votes, and communicating with the community that there is a need for more parking. When parking occupancy is regularly 85%, you should be in the process of building additional parking, for example, buying land, hiring a design team, and securing funding. So the parking count format recommended by council was to continue and monitor, to continue to monitor and collect parking counts quarterly and present to the council on a biannual basis, using the same format as previously provided, meaning those, the layout of the map that you've seen before. According to the parking consultant, they instructed or recommended that we do monthly parking occupancy counts, conduct two timeframes each month, weekday, midday, and Friday or Saturday evenings, which you'll see in that list is what we did. And when we're, when we are regularly 75% of the counts of a particular timeframe, evenings, are over 80%, we should be planning to add more parking. And when the counts are regularly exceed 85%, we should be actively adding more spaces, designing and building a parking structure. One year of parking counts regularly over 80% is adequate to plan for additional parking. Six months of occupancy over 85% is adequate to feel confident there is a need for more parking. Occupancy counts collected will determine if the demand for a parking structure is warranted based on the occupancy benchmarks chosen by council. Does anybody have any questions on the parking counts information presented today?
At this point, just any questions on the data, parking counts, all the updates we've had?
Just a quick question. We're going to continue to do this for another six months until we get to the year. We're at six-month mark right now?
Yep, we will continue to do it until you give us direction, otherwise.
Okay.
And then do the biannual presentation.
One thing that would be nice to know is weather, particularly in the wintertime, what it really was at that point, to determine if we, or in the summertime, if we got rainstorms and super humidity or something that's keeping people home instead of coming out, that sort of thing.
We do note if there's like a big event, something like that during our time that we're down there.
One quick question I had is, so for the parking consultant, they say the 80 or 85%. Do you know for how we would measure that with these numbers? You know, like Main Street, we know is typically on the weekend, the actual Main Street's always pretty much full. Is that 80 to 85%? Would that be kind of including the whole district? Or we, would we consider that, say, like Main Street and the secondary roads right off of that?
So if you go to slide three, that's going to give your average weekday, and then the next one is your average week, evening, or weekend. And those colors there tell you whether or not it's in that average of that 80 to 85, based on the counts that we took. Could go back to that.
On your slide, it's got the total counts. Fair to assume that Southern is essentially Sixth Street and South? Is that what I'm looking at here, or where, when you say Southern, I can gather the rest of Clay, Franklin, Maine, State, Washington, Southern is past the library?
So Southern is going to be Fifth Street.
Thank you.
South.
Yep, thanks.
Oh, the core of downtown, so this area here? When the core is regularly over 80%. So according to the parking consultant, when the core of downtown is at that 80%, sorry, I think I may be misunderstood what you were asking for.
Was that then the core is at the three?
Yes.
Main areas there?
Washington, State, and then your Main Street.
Okay. And do we have that on this chart for what that percentage is in those, for these counts?
It is on, I think, the overall average by zone. I guess we totaled it up, but it would give you, so that Main Street, if you're looking at weekday, so on slide five, if you're looking at the weekday for Main Street, you're at 82.81. Evenings and weekends, you're at 96.05. And then obviously, you could look at your state, you know, it separated it out, and then we added up the overall average for the, that entire area that you see colored on the map.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have anything to determine what would be the core, what I would call the core from State to Washington, First to Fifth or Sixth? I know I can look at the map and see that a lot of reds and yellows, particularly Friday and Saturday. Because I think that was in the character districts, and they have something like that.
You said State, and then?
State to Washington.
Mm-hmm.
And Maine. Everybody wants to park within a block where they're going.
Right, so Washington Street, if you look at that slide three, and slide four.
Oh, up there, okay. I guess that's not printed, but.
Yeah, it's going to have it right there.
There you go. Okay. Good.
So that averages, the these, the slide, or the maps on page, on slide three and four, reflect the overall averages.
Sure.
The slides at the very end give you more of the details on how each one of those times were.
I was looking at this one, and then I didn't.
Gotcha.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I didn't try to confuse you.
No, no, I, I looked at the whole thing. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Marcy, just to clarify, the boundaries within the colors there, those are including any off-street parking within the colored district, not on the street itself.
This is off-street and on-street.
Right, but in that zone. So Main Street has no off-street parking in its zone, because it's just the Main Street corridor.
Correct, yeah.
The other sections all have a mix of on-street and off-street. If we were to shift any of the zone boundaries, what would the, I mean, what other zones would you measure by just the on-street for that one strip?
I mean, when they do counts, they, they do, we have a map that they, they click on and they fill in how many occupied spaces or unoccupied. So I mean, we could go back and break that down if we needed to, between on-street, off-street, whatever zone you wanted us to look at in particular.
Okay.
And you can kind of do that with the, on slide five, you can see where the number of spaces, like it tells you, for example, the total number of spaces, and then it will tell you how many were occupied.
Yep.
So if I did my math, so you said the core is kind of Main Street, State Street, and Washington Street, those three districts?
That's your three main corridors.
Yep. So it'd be fair to say, I know I was just doing this math on here, that the, for the evening and weekend counts, it was about 88.57% full between those three combined, and about 63.7% on the weekday counts, for just those three core areas. I know you don't have that number off the top of your head, but.
If you look at it like that, isn't that what you're referring?
Yeah, so it's basically taking the yellow, green, and red sections, and adding all those numbers up to try and get a total rate of how much that area is filled up.
Main Street isn't really a parking area, it's just a handful.
Yeah.
And then slide five breaks it down for you exactly like the number of spaces that you could add up if you wanted to more closely figure out the average.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilors have?
Quick, do we have any ongoing interaction with the consultant, or what he presented in, on the follow-up then? We're done with that, or do we have him coming back to analyze this at all, or anything?
I mean, we're done with the, the study was finished.
Okay, and the terms of the contract is finished? Okay.
Correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions, some data from council? Okay, otherwise, we'll most move into the second piece, still parking related. But so there are a few items here, just to give an intro, that we're looking for feedback from council on. I know Marcy will cover these as well. But really, tonight, we're just looking at each of these three items individually. One is more so the rates on some of our parking tickets and permits. Second one would be the actual plan forward with the new US Bank lot, plans for what we want to do with that, between a flat lot, if there was any interest in the parking ramp discussion. And then the third one's the actual paid parking model, and any interest, or the interest from council will have us and staff bring back a more fleshed-out version, or what the feelings are with where we're at based on the new data. So otherwise, we will be asking for some action on these items. So we'll plan to have public comment, too, at the end of, on each of those items. So otherwise, any questions where Marcy jumps in? All right, all yours, Marcy. I can delay longer. I can talk.
All right, sorry about that. All right, so this is going to be the second presentation, the parking decisions for downtown. And again, why we are here. So this is a follow-up to the July 15, 2024 Committee of the Hole Downtown Parking Discussion, and I'm going to present information today for the Committee of the Hole of combined input of the parking consultant, so Fishback, city staff, and downtown community Main Street Board, and stakeholder meetings for the downtown paid parking. So decisions to be made after the presentation. One, raise parking citation and permit fees effective January 2026. Two, construct new surface lot or a parking structure on the recently acquired US Bank site. Three, timing of paid parking system recommendations back to council. So proposed recommendations. Monthly parking permits will remain available for lot-specific purchase in the five of the municipal lots downtown, including approximately 60 parking spaces in the newly acquired US Bank lot. That will be an extension of the Second Street West lot. Monthly parking permits will increase to $70 per month, based on increases in the citation and parking prices. And parking citations will increase from $10 to $25, with an additional $5 late fee if not paid in 30 days from the date issued per Iowa code. So a surface lot versus a parking structure. The surface lot, as you can see on the map there, is estimated to generate approximately 60 to 65 new public parking spaces for an estimated $900,000. City staff will still need to discuss options with the private parking lot in the northwest corner. You'll see that shaded on the exhibit. The commitment of land and money for this would be a minimum of a 10-year investment. The city is planning to demo the US Bank property in August, and temporarily pave the areas of that lot to be able to utilize it for additional parking for the remaining part of 2025. Once a decision is made on a permanent surface parking lot, staff can move forward with completing an additional survey and design work. Surface lot versus the parking structure. So a basic parking structure, meaning no commercial or residential living, is estimated to generate approximately 335 parking spaces for an estimated 14 to 25 million, $40,000 to $70,000 per space to build that, according to what we were presented. The long-term commitment of land and money, you're looking at a minimum of 20 to 50 years' use of a land, excuse me, land investment. So to recap, the decisions to be made for a direction to city staff, one, raise parking citations and permit fees effective January 2026. If these are not raised, then parking enforcement costs will start coming from the general fund. Two, construct new surface lot or parking structure on the recently acquired US Bank site. This would be a staged implementation, meaning you would raise parking citation and permit fees effective January 2026. You would keep the timed parking as it is throughout downtown, and implement paid parking, a paid parking system throughout downtown upon completion of a new surface lot or parking structure. You would establish paid parking fee structure upon implementation of the paid parking system. And then you would implement a parking citation forgiveness program that allows one parking citation to be forgiven annually per license plate number upon implementation of a paid parking system. This would not apply to handicap parking violations. Three, the timing of a paid parking system recommendations back to council, meaning like, when is the right time to do this? Would, you know, we, you know, start a discussion in June 2025, or wait until a decision on the surface lot or parking structure is made? Questions?
So a couple of things I'll clarify quick, if you can go back to the previous slide. So the conversation about the, what to do with the lot, is separate of the conversation about whether or not to move forward with the paid parking plan. So really, it's those three discussions of, one, just thoughts on the permit fees, rate structure for the permits and the parking tickets. A big part of that conversation is that we are, this year, will we start running into the red on what our parking costs are? So the question is, do we raise the fees to help cover that cost, or is that something we expect to come from the general fund going forward if we have a deficit in that? Second, then, is for that parking lot, now that we have the site, is the plan would probably be this year, if we approve moving forward with that, would be to putting a temporary lot, kind of through the end of this year, to have it through this winter, and then next year, looking at a more formal, formally, and much more nicely finished lot. Or if the group wanted to go a ramp discussion, that could be had, too. And then the third one is, is just the paid parking model in general, of direction on, based on where we know the parking counts are, the new lot coming into play with the US Bank building. Does the group feel at this time, we want to move forward with having staff build out that more fleshed-out paid parking proposal to bring back to council for review? Do we feel at this time, having the new lot helps accommodate some of that, and we just want to give direction to keep doing counts and bring back the conversation at a later date? Or do we feel at this time, it's a good chance to, especially with the new lot going in, which is not cheap, I can see there's a lot of expense going into buying the building, demo, and building that new lot, is this a time to want to talk about the paid parking, and some of that conversation there? And so we'll vote on each of these separately, but first, I'll just kind of open it up to any discussions, thoughts, and concerns.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I guess I'm a little bit confused, because I thought the last time that we met as a committee was to direct staff to develop a paid parking system in advance of a discussion about the structure, so that we could try and incentivize people to park in that Franklin corridor that's so underutilized. I'm seeing the only changes there would be in citation form, not in usage fees. So we do need a presentation about how to implement a paid parking system, whether it's a dollar an hour or what. We need to know the metrics on that before we would talk about the lot or ramp. So I guess I was, I was thinking we'd have that next. So just changing the citations for, you know, penalizing people from $10 to $15, instead of having some parking fee structure downtown, I don't know where we go from here, if that was the next step.
And that direction can be, if I can, quick, to say, move forward with all of these. We, there've been conversations with everybody, there wasn't a shared consensus of saying, yep, let's move forward with all that, especially now that we have that new lot, the new additional spots. So for this meeting, just wanted to bring it back and make sure that's still the direction we want to go, now that we've got some of the parking counts and some of the update with the US Bank lot.
Yeah, I agree with Councilor Gienfield's. I was under the impression we're going to see, we did see, a presentation to the downtown merchants with a varied response there. The thing that's changed is we have this bank lot, which, either way we do it, we put a temp parking lot in there, I think, and then see how that changes the metrics and the colors, this color scheme, and determine, maybe in six months, maybe three months, what we do. We get through the summer season of events downtown, what the parking numbers show. And the pay structure for some of the basic things, I think, is a go, because we have to satisfy the deficit.
Can you talk about the permits?
Permits, and, yeah, some of the basic things. And then the ramp is down the road a ways. So, as we see other data coming in, that's what I think, so.
So just to clarify, would that be kind of saying, still want to see, probably at some point, the park, paid parking discussion, but maybe a little bit down the road after?
Well.
Because partly for the paid parking?
Yeah, because you've got, you've got, sorry.
Go ahead.
The fees for the existing items, yes, we need to increase revenue for that. I haven't seen too much pushback on that individually, but maybe it hasn't been presented to the public in that fashion. The parking rollout of kiosks and that sort of thing, that's to be determined by more feedback, I think. And then we got the temp lot coming in, and then the ramps. So there's four different components, really, the way I see it, step by step, so.
Okay, thank Councilor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, kind of along the same lines, the way I understand it is that we're going to be running a deficit on our parking costs in the absence of the proposed increase. And so that is simply to cover costs. And then the second question is, how do we use paid parking as a way to dictate behavior, or where people park and how long they're there downtown? And I do think it's important that we look at the impact of the US Bank lot on kind of that, the saturation of what I would call the core of downtown. Because what I am noticing is that even at the highest peaks, where anybody that's going down to a downtown business, you're going to park as close as you can, that's kind of within that three or four-block area. But then there's sort of a precipitous drop to anything outside of that. So it kind of begs the question, how far do we want to ask people to walk?
Right.
To get to the business. So at the end of the day, I think that we need to see the impact of the US Bank lot. And I don't disagree with Councilman Cruz that, you know, further study after it's done, and a temporary lot's probably something we should plow ahead with before we consider that huge price tag up the garage, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilor.
I have a couple of questions, maybe Marcy can answer. The $900,000 for the cost on the US Bank lot, is that demo costs, or prep costs, or?
Chase would actually be able to answer that.
Construction costs only for the parking lot, does not include demo.
That's not with demo. Then the, my other question is on the increase of citation, is that for just downtown, or is that citywide?
That would be citywide.
That's citywide. And right now, on College Hill, they are paying for parking on, with kiosses.
Correct.
Or off and on.
In two of the lots.
On the, on the app. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Do we know the last time we looked at the price of our parking citations? How long have we been at $10?
We have been at $10 for, let me grab my paper here. Actually, I wrote it down. So we have been on College Hill, it's been at $10 since FY05. In downtown, it's been at.
In downtown, it's been at $10 since FY10.
Feels to me like, no matter what we do here, we should probably have a more regular evaluation of what that cost is, so we're not trying to raise the fee 250%. It just doesn't seem like the right way to go. I think we do have to, we absolutely have to offset the cost. I'm not disrupt, or disagreeing that we need to make an increase, but I think maybe a more regular review of that would be prudent.
So when they did that previously, it went from $2 to 5 and then from 5 to 10 on each of those.
Sure. Okay. And then what's the current cost on the permit for?
35.
And your proposal was 70?
Seventy.
Okay. Again, I think probably the same discussion, just maybe a more regular review of what that cost is, just so we're not, it, we need, we need to do it, but it feels a little bit like a gotcha.
I just want to interject for a second. I think what the problem with that, agree what you're talking about. Everybody would rather see incremental than a big one at one time. I think the problem was, is we had a study in 18, and so I think a lot of times it's like, well, let's see what the study does, and then we'll talk about rates, you know, and then, then it doesn't happen, and then it's, you know, then we're back again about it's going to be time to do a study again. And so I, I think that's why at this point, we just feel like excluding any other discussion about parking, we at least have to talk about those rates and permits. So I think we understand completely, I just, that was some of the complications of why it's, hasn't really gone up is everyone thinks the study's going to be the answer, and let's do the study and, and all that. So I just wanted to add that little history.
That makes, that makes sense. No, by the way, we had a pandemic in there too. So, I mean, yeah, fair, fair. And then my last comment, just I think we do need to explore what the temporary lot may provide for us in terms of potentially changing behavior, 60 to 65 spots. It's a great situation, so I'm more inclined to look to see what that does for us before we entertain any discussion on a ramp. Even if there may be one warranted down the road, I'm a numbers person, I like to see what impact this has first. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot, one of my questions was the timeline. I know Councilman Cruz asked about doing it after a lot of the major summer things, but it doesn't look like we would have a parking lot up and running until September or October. Chase, is that?
So the intent would be, the demo schedule would be on the agenda tonight is asbestos testing. And then after that, we'd get the asbestos tested, we'd have that abated, go out for RFPs for demolition. But we're envisioning with, with Sturgis and Ragbri that the demo would not take place until August timeline. As part of the demo project, we would temporarily put some temporary pavement in the parking lot and stripe it for that specific site. It would kind of look a little odd just because of the way it's laid out, but residents could use that as parking for now until a further design could be done for potentially next year, if that would move forward.
So really, September before it'd be in use?
Yes.
Okay.
Or later.
Or later, right.
And then we could add whatever spaces end up happening in that temporary area, we would just add that to our counts.
We'd specifically add that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
We could create a spot for, to click on that.
Well, either way we do it, we're going to keep with these counts.
Yeah, yeah, we'll keep up with those regardless.
Might be a year and a half before we have a big discussion on.
We're probably not going to solve parking.
Not tonight?
Probably, probably not in a couple of years or a couple decades.
Yeah, until, I mean, unless you would give us different direction, that's the plan. We'll just be doing, doing the counts and bringing them to you.
So, Mr. Mayor, to that point, clarification there, the timing of when is the right timing for paid parking system? Are we talking about this point of discuss in June of 2025? Are we talking about rehash this discussion that we've had multiple times over the years? Or are you going to bring back a recommendation of these are the fees we recommend on this block length in June?
I guess that depends on what you direct us to do tonight.
I'm not trying to start an argument, but I think we already directed staff to come back with that. That's where I'm confused.
I can step in here, so we directed staff, but with the new information and conversations with everyone, there's been an unclear consensus on, do we really want to go ahead with bringing back that full paid parking model? Because it will create a lot of community conversation, a lot of concerns from downtown residents. So before we, because we actually had some presentation ready to bring tonight, but rather than bring that here, knowing there wasn't a clear consensus yet of if we even want to have that conversation at this time or wait till later, we just wanted for tonight to get that direction. We could bring that back probably at the next meeting, little down the line, if we wanted to see the full paid parking proposal. However, there was still kind of an unclear consensus from, from my end, not from staff's end, talking with everybody on if we were really ready to jump into that deep of that conversation yet. What we did talk about though is anytime we do a new action, like a new lot, like I said, we're showing the expense of that, and there's a lot of money that goes into purchasing that. So it's a good time to discuss if we need to look at going that direction. But that's the feedback we're looking for tonight is, is that the next step? Everyone would like to go in deep on that paid parking discussion here, maybe in the next month? Or if the direction is saying, let's just keep collecting the data and look at that again at a later date?
I think I'm going to go out on a limb and say, let's go ahead and move in that direction of instituting the paid parking. It was a discussion of 2018 and prior and was implemented because it was needed at that time. Now we're coming up on going into the red in the parking enforcement funds, so we need that part, that paid structure. I keep saying structure inadvertently, but the paid system.
Yep.
As well as these raised citation fees, I suppose that's right to look at those, but that was the direction. That, yeah, we've, we've got to do something rather than just assessing the numbers. The assessing the numbers was to verify whether or not it was going to do enough by implementing the paid system so that people would spread out their parking, to Councilmember Hawbaker's point, how far do we want people to walk? I don't think two blocks is terrible for wellness sake. And so for me, I think the structure, the parking ramp structure conversation is off the table until we get that temporary parking and a paid system and reassessed with those surface lots. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I would recommend that we wait until after the 65 spots are picked up and we see what our usage is, and then possibly discuss paid parking. I don't think that's really something that's necessary right now. 2018 may have been part of the discussion, but we've had a lot of things change since 2018, and we still have some changes to, to come. I'd also like to see the comparison of, of cost on, what's that mean going into the red? And are we paying, you know, for services that, across town or services for just downtown on College Hill?
You talking about that two-hour strip on front of University Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm somewhere between Councilor Schultz and Gannfield here. I lean towards hearing what the numbers are. I like numbers, as some of us say, to get a benchmark, what we're thinking of doing. I'm looking at this, these various colored maps here, these types here, and knowing that we're an entertainment district in a big way, since 2018, I don't know how many seating capacity we added for downtown for bars and restaurants. I don't think they're going away. They may change themes, but they, we draw in new businesses for that purpose. I would like to see some numbers. It'll, it'll help us guide the direction. I think it's probably inevitable to get to some sort of paid parking kiosk sort of system at some point because we're getting further and further away from COVID. And I like to see the numbers. Doesn't mean it's going to be a big presentation like, we're going to do this in six months, six weeks, maybe six months, but not six weeks, so.
See the numbers, you just mean see the kind of proposal of what the paid parking system looks like?
Yeah, well, they presented it once already to the downtown, and I don't know if that's been modified much since then, maybe a little bit possibly, but there'd be some caveats that things could be in a range instead of this is the number. Simply because of costs going up into the future for parking enforcement, that sort of thing.
So do you have a timeline you're kind of recommending? You said you're in between the two? We're kind of thinking you'd still like to see it brought back.
Sooner than later. I don't really want to wait until we have a temporary parking lot at the bank site. Like to see something before that.
Okay.
And I don't know if we could do these quarterly? And then the next six months will be, what, November?
Yeah, so we'd be doing, this one includes more than just the quarter because we included December in there, but.
I mean, the summer activity with lots of new places and more coming, will crowd, you'll have more streets in the red here or areas in the red. I mean, Saturday, December 7th, what I called the core, for people to see if they can see this, there's a lot of red there, a lot of area that's at 100%, not just 80. I mean, you throw in the yellow, it's a lot. That's, I don't know what the weather was December 7th, but even on a Monday, you see some red and yellows in there, so.
Mr. Mayor.
One sec.
That's, that's just, see the numbers.
Okay.
I'd also like to maybe have some discussion to direct staff to do some partnership with downtown to provide more information to folks who work downtown about where they can park where there's not a time limit. And I heard from several people that employees were getting a lot of tickets, and I'm sure they have that information, but maybe a refresh or some encouragement to business owners to get that information out to their staff. And I think that we have some obligation to be a part of that, not to just put that all on Community Main Street. And I also would like to explore some ways to encourage folks to park outside of the core. You know, if they're planning on doing, like if they're planning on visiting several different businesses, you know, you could go park on this block over here, you know, there's some of those places that are at 0% and then you walk all of Main Street. You know, you start down by the library, you walk all the way to First, you know, and what that experience would be like? How do we encourage folks to do that? And I also think that would be a way to encourage folks to patron more businesses. And I think there's some creative ways out there to do that. That would probably require some staff time to research that, but, you know, I think that there would probably be some options. I know even like partnering with the library to like find Fable, or, you know, if you have a family, you could park here and whatever. I think there's just a lot of creativity that could be put into that as it relates to encouraging folks to park outside of that core if possible. So I would be interested to see some information on that.
Okay. Thank Councilor. Other thoughts?
I guess I would just second what Hannah said, to have a service industry parking lot possibly in some economical way. Might be more than a block away possibly, some of them, I mean. And the other interesting thing, the idea with the kiosk and presentation along that lines, we have four blocks or five-ish that are very heavily occupied or pop, visited. Turn it the other way and just have people go four blocks the other way towards the parks or, and you can have dinner in one end of the strip and go to, have drinks at the other end of the strip, and you're walking further than the one block you parked on State or Washington, so.
Thank Councilor. Any other thoughts from everyone, either on the permits and ticket rates, paid parking, or the lot development itself? Okay, so we'll just take these all, really just looking for a vote here on how we move forward. For first, we'll do, what was that?
Public comment.
Yes, thank you. So I was going to also entertain motion, but actually, I think just since we kind of had the open discussion, if everyone's okay, we'll just open up the public comment, and then we'll come back to look at the votes on the items. Okay, with that, we'll open it up to public comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the parking related discussions tonight around the paid parking system, plans to move forward with that, the parking lot and the development of that, or the paid permits and ticket rates. Just name the address, please.
Gee, I don't know. It feels like Groundhog's Day again. We're talking about parking. I think I've been up here for 13 years talking about this, so first and foremost, I want to say, great progress. I'm glad that we are past the sort of, do we have a problem stage and actually into the what are we going to do about it stage? And I like to hear the discussion. Seems like we have kind of a consensus emerging on a few things. I'd like to add a couple of facts to just make sure that everybody's in the right sort of frame of mind. Gil attends a lot of the downtown meetings and has a benefit of a few of these things, so maybe I'll just get it out into general understanding. Number one is, first of all, I don't think anybody's surprised by the fact that the economy's kind of going, we don't know exactly where. At the same point in time, property taxes went up 42% downtown last year. I just got my assessment, this year, 29% up for this year. So to say that the merchants are concerned about costs, to say that merchants are concerned about, you know, where their business is and is there going to be a downturn in the general economy and all those things, I just want to make sure that everybody understands the answer to both of those is yes. There's a lot of concern downtown. I think we're all super proud of what we've done in downtown, and I think it was Councilman Cruz that said, we've got new restaurants that are coming in, a lot of new users that are there, even on Sundays, if you're driving around in downtown, you're seeing lots and lots and lots of people that are there. So that is good with all the costs that are going on to it. Unfortunately, we need a lot of people downtown just to keep up with these costs. Now, a couple of things that I think I'd like to offer for sort of your thinking as you're trying to make discussions on next step. First of all, I don't think there's general opposition to a paid parking model. I think the question is sort of how, how much, when, and kind of all of those things. So I like the idea, and I think generally, we would like you to consider taking steps. Let's not sort of take big, you know, huge changes. I think last time when we put out kiosks and things, there was a lot of, oh my lord, what just happened sort of reaction to it. Maybe if we sort of did this in a few more incremental steps, I think that that might be something that might make some sense. I'd like to make sure that everybody understands, I think if you did the citations portion of it and the, and the permits portion of it, just to give everybody a number, and I think I've met with almost all of you individually and will have a chance to get all the rest of it. My property taxes at River Place, and I say my because I'm the one that just looked at the statement, it's $150 a month for property taxes, basic maintenance and insurance. That's no hard costs, that's no, that's just striping and insurance and keeping up the cost of it on the private lot that are there. So moving permits to $70 a month is, is by the standpoint of comparing to a private sector is, is cheap. So that, I think, would be a reasonable step for you to think about, and probably if you have 60 or 65 spaces that are there in the new lot, plus whatever you have in the other lots on it, you know, just looking at kind of the permit structure and the fees might be a good way for you to consider taking a first step. The citations, I think everybody sort of understands that we've got to do some things to modify behavior and certainly getting people to park within their agreed-upon amount of time is, is a reasonable step. So I want to make those couple of at least offers for things that might be a compromise in moving forward. One other thing, just kind of related to parking and citations, and I don't know, Jennifer is much smarter about a lot of these things than I am. I do believe with higher property taxes, substantially higher property taxes coming into the district, there should be substantial amount more TIF funds than what there were before. I don't know whether TIF allows the coverage of operational costs and related things or not, but that might be another source to look at short of having people, you know, paying for parking generally in downtown. I think.
And just answering that one quick, I don't think we can use that for any operational expenses.
Okay.
No, that's okay. Up to this point, we have not. It's always been capital, and I think one of the reasons that we've always stood on that is because we never know what's going to happen with TIF. So if you're using it for operationals and then TIF goes away, now we're stuck, so. But in saying that, you know, using downtown TIF dollars for the cost of the lot, resurfacing of the lot, you know, those are things we can use TIF dollars for those type of things because they would be capital costs.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Sorry to cut you off, Mr. Gudel.
I thought that that was right. We have, we have the book to go to, to get those things, so thank you. I think the only other thing that I wanted to just generally say is, I think everybody remembers, and we kind of all chuckle in behind ourselves and say, it's not necessarily a parking problem as much as we have sometimes a walking problem in our community. And I think that that's, by the way, what I hear from many communities, so I don't think that's different here than anywhere else. But I do think that that magical somewhere around two blocks is where people say, that's about as far as I'm going to walk. If you look at the diagram and, and the data that was put together, you can see it's really State Street to Washington and First to Sixth that, you know, generally is where people park. So adding sixty-five spaces in a lot in the location where the US Bank formerly was, is an improvement. It's not quite as glamorous as an improvement as you kind of would think it would be, because a lot of people frankly park in the bank spots even when the bank is closed anyway. So maybe you're picking up thirty or forty spaces in there overall, but that is an improvement and it's in an important area of the downtown. So even taking that public spot and just surfacing that area right now, I think would be something that people would appreciate. And you're doing kind of carrot and stick by new spaces and a few new restrictions and costs to go along with it. Just are done.
Thank you, Mr. Kedrell. Anyone else for a public comment tonight? Just name an address, please.
Troy Davis, three oh seven Main Street, Main Street Suites. I'm with Hannah. I just want to make sure that, the hard part for me being in this a year is tracking kind of that you're keeping our complaints like in the purview. Like I keep hearing we're budget shortfall, but what about, you know, I can't afford, you know, a ten dollar an hour employee that's gotta pay a seventy dollar monthly fee, you know, like. So if somehow that shows up on the list, you know, then I think as an owner, I feel more involved in what we're doing. We're not just trying to budget shortfall, we're trying to consider the, it's a tough deal to be trying to park down there and, and run a business and then not get parking tickets, not pay big parking fees. So, you know, we've, we've had our, cost of our labor double in the last five years. We've had the cost of now parking, we've had taxes, you know, we're just getting, our business models just shrank, you know, really quickly. And a lot of what you said is, we'd be better off, you know, incrementally if we can deal with that stuff. That'd be one thing, but it feels like everybody took a pause for ten years here and all of a sudden, everybody's trying to get theirs. And when you're in a, you know, a minimum wage kind of profit center, you're just running us out. And I, and I see that, you know, I haven't been down there long, but I'm watching more people leave than come in, so. I want to see Cedar Falls, I've lived around here my whole life and I've watched Cedar Falls, Main Street be gorgeous like it is and I've watched it tank, you know, and be, be a ghost town. And I don't want to see it go back to that. But it'll be, it won't be long, we won't be able to stay down there if we keep getting nickel and dime like that. So I just, I would appreciate if we get some version of, yeah, we gotta balance the budget, but we also need to consider these three things. And, and if our concerns are up there, then, you know, we'll work with you and we'll get those feedbacks in there and come up with the best plan for everybody, so. So I appreciate getting that started and I'm willing to help in any way I can, so. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And I will say that, good point, because I think a lot of times in this presentation, that was a talk about the, the costs overall and the budget. I think for us though, all of our conversations, majority has been just what's the best thing to do to help support downtown? Because you're always trying to balance really the paid parking system and I know a lot of the ramp conversation, it was toward the end of like, well, paid parking just pays for the ramp. It's like, well, really downtown TIF is gonna pay for the ramp. The operations though is then funded through that, but I think at the end of the day, what we've always tried to come back to is, that really only matters if it either improves or hurts the situation for businesses downtown, so. Thank you for bringing that up though, because I do think sometimes we forget to keep bringing it back to the fact that. It's why everyone always joke that there's really no solution to parking. It's just an ongoing, trying to figure out what's the next best step, so thank you guys for the feedback. Anyone else for public comment tonight? Just name, address and affiliation, please.
Kim Bear, thirty-eight fifteen Union Road, Community Main Street. I am here on behalf of all the people like the Davises, obviously. Hannah brings up a great point. It is working with the businesses and the employees to make sure that they are parking in the appropriate spots. Do the employees park in the appropriate spots? Probably not. Do you park next to your business when you go to work? Probably. So I think there is some work that we can do and I would love to, you know, do that work. We had stakeholder meetings that the city, that city staff did in November and this is what you heard, is we are selling a ten, twelve dollar burrito or an acai bowl or some delicious cookies and chocolates. This is hard to digest, especially when we have the other costs that are coming in. So I think we just need to be mindful of, this isn't just, this is their livelihood. This is, you know, people have invested a great deal of money to be downtown and God bless them for that, because wow. I mean, we have something to be proud of and I get that has also created a parking problem. I understand that. However, I would rather talk about a parking problem because downtown is so great than to try to figure out where we can get people to come to. So I think there is, you know, there needs to be options for people, where they can park, how much it costs. Can we work better with the businesses to make sure that their employees are parking in appropriate spots? Absolutely. You know, my fifteen-year-old daughter has her first job downtown and she knows where to park. She was raised correctly. So I think there's a lot of work that we can do. I would love to continue to work with the city as well as council and mayoralistic to do that. I don't want anybody to feel like they've been slapped in the face and all of a sudden they have these new things happening. So I think we need to be mindful of the people that have made downtown what it is and why it's so great. And that didn't happen by accident. This is hard work and a lot of money. So I want to be mindful of all the people that have really put their heart and soul into it. But I also want to be able to work with people to understand, we know that things are happening and changing. And I see the ninety percents that are on those parking counts, I understand that. But it's also, we've probably had something really fun happening, so that's why it's ninety percent. So I, but I want to continue to see those things happen, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. And again, just to say a good point and harp on, we are having this problem because we have such a beautiful downtown. If people weren't parking downtown, we'd be having a whole different conversation like we did thirty years ago, forty years ago. So, thank you. Anyone else for public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council just for any discussion, conversation following up from public comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
The main concern I have with whatever we decide, first of all, I appreciate the acknowledgement that it does take everyone. The, you know, it's a great problem to have. I always have said, I come from, my mom grew up in a town that had a thriving business district for, you know, decades and it does not anymore. So I'm super happy that we have a parking problem and not a, our business or our buildings are crumbling problem. I think this does show oftentimes there's a, and I'm not saying it's gonna go away, but I hope folks do understand that the city, AKA the taxpayer, is financing this purchase of, of this bank building and it's not an official thing yet, but if it did come to demolition and construction of a lot or whatever, that is funded by the Cedar Falls taxpayer, so that to me shows support and partnership and the city willing to recognize that there is a problem. I do appreciate the comments by Councilwoman Christman and the business owner. I, I have a daughter who works downtown. I got a parking ticket with, I knew it was from her car one day and we had a, I mean, she, she, I think is raised right, but apparently she didn't understand the assignment. So we had a very good conversation about, you know, mom, I myself have said to people before. You know, I remember my time, you know, College Hill used to be, it used to be kind of the op, there used to be a lot of needs to rotate parking on College Hill. And I worked on, in the College Hill business and my daughter works downtown Main Street. It is good, I think a good choice that if you don't have to park right behind where you work. I mean, and, and I understand the concerns about, well, they'll have to pay for a seventy dollar permit or they could find a spot that doesn't require a payment or permit. That is an option. And, and I say that not to sound snotty, but seriously, in two thousand and twenty, during a pandemic, totally different discussion. But this, this conversation started, was going on then, like Mr. Kedrell said, it was happening thirteen years ago. None, this conversation's never gonna end. Okay, so this gets me to my point. Whatever we decide, I hope to goodness that we stick with it. That is my concern as a council person. No being reactive, like if someone gets a ticket and we, all of a sudden, we're sitting here having an emergency meeting or emergency referral, that is where my concern lies. Not because their concerns aren't warranted, but because when we talk about getting confusing and, and being back and forth, I think that, that definitely plays into it. We need to let things lie. I think that was a big part of the consultant's recommendations in December when we, when they were here, was no matter what you decide, you need to stick with it. That was in reference to the paid parking. Like if you're gonna do it, you can't go back and, and, and take it back after a few weeks when people are upset about it. So I guess my main concern is, yes, let's all work together. Yes, let's have the conversations of, you know, maybe if you, if you want to have parking spots outside your business, and I say this as the person who loves a person who works downtown, you gotta go park somewhere else so that your customers have the spot right in front of your business. The other thing is, is please, like, let's make the rule, let's stick to it. And then that makes it a lot easier for the people who have to enforce it to get by on their day-to-day business. So those are what I hope on. And I agree, the referral was for, and I understand what got us to this spot and I'm not saying we have to go back on it, but the referral, because I think I made the referral, was to come back with a paid parking system. That thought was, if we were ever gonna get to a structure, I, I don't see that ever happening without paid parking. But I understand the thoughts behind, you know, moving maybe in a slower direction and seeing what happens when we have the lot, if we have the lot.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussions, feedback from council?
I guess I wanted to, I'm thinking back to college days when I was in the dorms. The lot by the UniDome was affectionately called Siberia. And everybody had their, what was it, Lot C, I think, with permit? And that concept might be able to be used for the service staff and people to find a lot, whether it be across the river, I don't know, just an idea. But students would be accustomed to going to Siberia, number two maybe, for downtown service staff. But they maybe have it a cheaper rate, you know, something economical, so that's just an idea. The price of the, what do I want to say, parking violation, ten dollars is really too cheap. We definitely need to raise that. You go to any other community and they sting you with forty, fifty, sixty dollar fines and so on. So that's, ten dollars is long gone in my mind, so. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any other comments from council? So otherwise, I think the way I'd like to do this is, because I think the first one, the lot discussion's pretty well, I think everyone's on the same page about moving forward with that lot. So we'll look for a motion to move ahead with the plan to do the asbestos testing, demo the building, move ahead with a temporary lot through this, end of this season and then with a more permanent lot construction going into the next year.
I'll submit a motion for that.
Second.
Okay, then, any other discussion on that?
I do think it's important, like I'd like to know though, that for sure, we're gonna be doing these citations. Like to me, that's very important to this discussion. Because I don't, I'm, I'm not saying I'm against the lot, but we're all gonna agree on the, we're gonna raise the citations, right? I don't want to go more into the red, so could we do that one first maybe, in the order on here?
Can, if I, if the group would rather vote on that first, if there's a person who needs to. Okay, so we'll look for a motion then to, well, actually Attorney Rogers, do we need to withdraw that previous motion then?
I guess technically we should withdraw the first one, yeah.
So and then the person that, gonna need-
Sure.
Goes withdrawing that, so we'll look for a motion then to approve the increase, having staff come back with the proposal for the increased rates for the parking permits and the parking tickets.
Yeah, I move for that. Second.
So, second, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if it would please the group, if we could do the twenty-five on citations, but maybe a little less extreme on the rental. And talk about maybe fifty dollars instead of seventy to make it more incremental. Would that be agreeable to the group?
Yeah.
I would have a question then for-
Does that get us anywhere?
Does that just make us lessen the red?
Well, I think increasing the violations are definitely gonna help. But one of the things I wrote down on my piece of paper was, when I heard incremental, was, you know, similar to how we do stormwater and sewer increases, I wrote down, maybe we'd like to do like a two-step right in there, you know, like say, we're gonna do fifty dollars on January first, twenty twenty-six, but also agree, we're gonna get to seventy dollars the next year or, or two years later. You know, sometimes with sewer and that, we, we kind of approve three-year increases, so I just didn't know that might be a thought too. If you want to do incremental, we could do that and bring that back when we come back with our proposal of, of doing something like that. Or we can go with Mr. Gannfield's idea too.
I'd be agreeable to a more exploratory incremental shift. I think that gives us more time to figure out other options before we'd go full-on seventy.
Okay.
Fully agreed.
Consensus on that. So yeah, any opposition to the idea of an incremental, staff bringing back incremental increase proposal?
None for me.
What staff could do is bring back a version of both. And then we could slice it and dice it, see the numbers, see the revenue generated, that sort of thing. And make a difference. So, heads are nodding, okay. So is that a motion?
We'll take this-
We did about three motions or a-
Clarifying the motion.
So, motion to move forward with having staff bring back an incremental plan as well as just what it looks like if we just increase it at one time?
Correct.
Incremental plan, yep, for the parking permits and then full implementation of the increase rate for the violations. Any discussion?
Do I get a voting block or?
You want, you want the little blocks? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We'll move to the parking lot discussion. So again, look for a motion to just have staff, the direction to move ahead with demoing the existing building, moving ahead with the temporary lot this, end of this season, then the more permanent flat lot coming up next year.
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion?
Unless there's any way we could leave a restroom structure standing, I think. Probably need to leave the bathroom part of it, so, yeah, there you go.
We could ask the construction company how that would look on the demo cost. No, just kidding, we're not gonna do that part. Any other questions from council?
Porta-potties.
All right, seeing none, alls in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And then the third one, so the question is, and I'll look for a motion for this of, actually, I'll just look at this two ways. One is, other motion to look at giving proposal or direction to come back with a more paid parking, more detailed paid parking plan, not necessarily one for final approval, but we would bring that back to a next committee meeting to kind of go into the details and bring a more fleshed-out parking plan. And you can either, I'd say, give direction to staff to bring that here as soon as we're able to have that. And again, we've got most of the details there, but we'd just like to make sure we've got that finalized to bring. Or if anyone's looking to make a motion to push that to a later date, at this point, just continue tracking the information and say we'll approach that at a later date.
I'll take a stab at it. I'd make a motion to delay that by six months to look at an implementation for that.
I second that.
A motion second to look at delaying, bringing back a paid parking, a full detailed paid parking plan until later date. So, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd like to amend that to be quicker than six months, maybe three months? Because we're gonna implement the increase in the permits and everything, or when's, when's that expected to be implemented? Jenny, oh, okay.
Well, my, the difficulty I think I see with that is we're not gonna really understand the impact of the US Bank lot until, at the earliest from when I heard from Chase, September. So that, that was where my six months was coming from. Give us a quarter.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, for me, it's, okay, if we're gonna do the, if we're waiting for the, how the, the lot's gonna work, I guess I just don't want to have, committee time is precious for all of us, so I want to get the best information. If we're, we're not gonna talk about it now, which is fine, I'm okay with that. What's gonna get us the best amount of time? And I under, six months, yes, at least that puts it-
get us the best amount of time? And I understand, six months, yes, at least that puts it, but six months is November, like, I guess I'm just wondering, should we just maybe wait a little bit longer? Should we give it a year?
I don't, and we could, because we do plan to bring back quarterly update, just on the data, the parking accounts. We can address this next time that comes back.
I just want really good, I want really good data and information.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'll amend on the fly. What if we looked at this, what if we looked at this in January, because we do have an election in there. So what if we looked at this in January, so we're not trying to make a decision in November, to Kelly's point, when half this body may or may not be here?
Friendly amendment to look at after the end of this year.
And I guess my only concern with that, not hearing a second, but I don't want to cut anybody off, my only concern with that is people are parking every day. People aren't violating parking every hour, or maybe they are. But obviously, it's gonna make a shift in the right direction to do some kind of a paid system. So yes, we're gonna study and keep the numbers coming. So once that structure gets utilized as a temporary structure in September, we still want to talk about what do we do to incentivize shifting behaviors. I do think that we want to hear a recommendation for what does it look like if we have free half-hour parking on the main corridor and then paid elsewhere. To kind of keep that patronage happening downtown is great. So we need to hear all options, but I think the money concern, going in the red and coming out of the general operations fund that we did so good a job to keep low, that's only gonna be helped by a paid system instead of just penalizing citation issues. It's my thoughts on it. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe we're getting a boatload of money on citations. I tend to doubt it, so.
But we'll say, if I may
Yeah, go ahead.
To go back to, I think really the conversation with the paid parking is really about the change in behavior. Because the revenue from it's really gonna, I mean, there's expenses to implementing it, so it's really gonna be more just about are we really improving the parking situation, which I know you definitely are including that, too. I just wanted to make sure we're direct about that. But also, I do think, speaking personally, I think a big part of the concern of having that conversation, if we're not ready to do it, is it is a raw spot, bringing this up time and again. It does bring up a lot of concerns, thoughts from the community. We can definitely have a general proposal just for review and thoughts, even if we decided not to go forward with it now and wait till later. But we were kind of wondering, does that inflame the conversation, and then we decide not to move forward with it? But that could be, like, we could have the conversation and just say, hey, this looks like a good plan. We don't want to move forward with it right now. Let's wait till we get some additional accounts. Just so something for thought is, we can have the conversation. I would just make sure we're very cognizant of working with Main Street, our downtown businesses, let them know, hey, maybe at this point, it's just reviewing it, knowing we're gonna look at implementation at a later date. But that's the thing I want to make sure we're cautious of is just that community concern and being cognizant of that.
Would it be less inflammatory if we had some, some research and recommendation potentials emailed to council for their consideration rather than making it constant, ongoing, you know, inflammatory thing? So we can at least look at it and go, oh, yeah, that one has merit, that one doesn't, we'll let it sit for a while. We get some feedback in that regard, so we kind of know what options might exist towards the end of the year.
Mr. Mayor, I was thinking along the lines there that the information that was presented in the two meetings, there was no other public presentation of those numbers, was there, that I recall? Because I'm thinking, it depends how you present it, that this is the first step in an idea of paid parking. Let's put it out there for wider circulation and then digest that feedback as we take data. That's what I was thinking.
Just to answer your question, no. So we had those stakeholder meetings, presented different paid parking options. One of the things we heard at the stakeholders, and we understood the concern, is please don't bring this right now when it's the holiday season. Could you wait till after the first of the year? So I had that request, made sense, you know, we thought that seems reasonable. I think then, after the first of the year, this whole US Bank site came up and it was kind of a, okay, well, do we kind of want to see how that plays into everything now before we bring a paid system back? And then I think we were prepared to come tonight with the paid system recommendation, but I think, as the mayor already explained, it was a, wasn't sure if everyone was quite consensus on that, but that's kind of why we're here now and why, guidance about when the good timing is. But you're right, Mr. Chris, it hasn't been presented again. We have made some tweaks since that presentation to the stakeholders, just things we heard that we're like, eh, maybe we should propose that just a little bit different. So I would say generally, it's probably the same, generally, but just some tweaks.
And we could, as an option, we can bring it back to a committee meeting with no action planned on the item. Originally, that was kind of what we were planning tonight, if we kept it in, was to just say there'd be no action tonight, we're just presenting it to get feedback. So we could still bring it back at a future meeting just for feedback from the community, from council, and then see, generally, as I talk to you all separately, to see what everyone's feeling, if we want to do it now or at a later date.
Yeah, because at the meeting, I was at both of them, they were less than enthused, shall we say? And when some of the community, Main Street people say that there's buy-in to this, and I'm like, oh, there's a big difference there from what I saw. When was that, November, September, October? When did we do that? November?
November.
Yeah, there was, yeah, less than enthusiasm for it, so. I don't know, can he speak anywhere? Probably not.
Anybody, go ahead, come on.
I think the hard part's been that we didn't get a follow-up. Like, we're not seeing, you know, like, all the things that we brought up. We didn't get something back that, you know, altered the proposals. So we haven't seen the next step of, well, based on what you said, here was our original, here's how we could phase your thing, and here's this other option.
The tweaks that she mentioned?
Yeah, so like, just being able to keep that ongoing.
Another, another couple meetings, I would
So I'd say, and I'll kind of make this as a proposal, I know we've got a standing motion, we'll come back in a sec, but maybe make a proposal that if the group's comfortable with it, I would say we can bring back, continue working with downtown businesses, merchants, and Main Street, and plan to bring everyone kind of a tentative proposal, knowing at this point, we want to be looking for action. It would just be to get the information in front of everybody, get the community's feedback, get your feedback, and then we can continue working based on that feedback to see, do we bring this back at a later date at this time? At least then everybody's kind of got the information about what it tentatively looks like, and then what we could do with it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would, you know, I'll make that motion to basically have a committee meeting so that we're all talking about the same thing with no anticipation of action at that time, assuming that the standing motion dies.
Yeah, I'm happy to withdraw my motion based on the mayor's comments.
Okay. A second, what's your?
Okay, so basically, the motion is to bring forward that presentation at a committee meeting for educational purposes only with no action taken. Fair?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's the biggest piece, is that not with the expectation that there's an action that's immediately taken with it. That was really where I was trying to get to, so.
Because I think that feeds into everything we're talking about. We want to know what the interplay is with the US Bank lot. Well, we need to know better detail on what the possible plans are to understand how it interacts with those additional spots.
Lots of moving pieces here.
But it keeps it moving forward as far as the council's education and if we want to do future steps.
And we can make sure and partner closely with the downtown vendors, Main Street, and everyone to make sure that
Right, I mean
Everyone's aware of that, how we're bringing it forward.
The whole idea is to have a parking system that enhances the flow of traffic to help with the businesses down there. We don't want to do something that's counterintuitive in that regard, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming the motion includes one of the two meetings in June, probably?
I said, do you guys want to set an explicit date, or knowing we're taking the direction of we'll bring it back as soon as we feel that that's all put together and ready to go?
Would the schedule allow for committee presentation?
That's why I said one of the two meetings in June. We do have some other ones scheduled, but we can probably move those around as well, just
If staff can make it happen, that would be great, I think, so.
Okay, I'd say more likely the second meeting in June, but we can plan on, because I would like to make sure we have some of those conversations with downtown vendors and Main Street to make sure that they're aware of the plans and, okay?
Have the tweaks been presented to anyone?
I don't think so at this point. It's just been internal staff conversation about
Sounds like June.
Well, I think that was part of what our presentation was going to be tonight about a paid system. I think Marcy had some notes about, hey, this is what was presented, but this is what we're presenting tonight.
Right, yeah. So we had, I had those presentations put together, but things changed a little bit just because of the non-consensus. So those, those presentations can easily be put back together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we can highlight what those differences are. I think she already had notes gone on what those were from what was at the stakeholder meeting. So we can sure do that.
Okay, so I'll take the motion as in June?
Yes, please.
All right, so we have a motion second to bring back in June, a planned presentation of some of the details with no action planned at that meeting. So any other discussion?
June 16th, is that what we're targeting?
Most likely, I would guess. Is that the second?
Second one.
Or the third Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. All right, we're done talking parking. If anybody was waiting for that point. For now, till the next meeting.
Always an asterisk.
All right, so we will now move to item number three, review the requirement to have two windows and other egress requirements, square footage requirements, whether utility services can be provided separate from the main unit, and the main unit may be a rental as well as the ADU. And we've got the presentation, Chris Sevy. A quick background on this, so this was from referral to bring this for additional conversation. There has been some state law changes around ADU, so in the presentation we'll see, here are the things that we are proposing to change based on the state law changes. And then I know we've also got for our discussion, a few other items that were talked about in previous meetings, we can review around, some changes around the egress and some of the bedroom number limitations, so.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I appreciate this opportunity to come speak with you. As was discussed, this agenda item is to discuss a referral made five months ago on December 16th, 2024. That referral was to look at four specific code standards that were adopted in November 2024. Those four standards include requirement to have two egress windows for a basement ADU accessory dwelling unit. I'm gonna say ADU for most of this presentation. Square footage restrictions, utility separation requirements, and owner occupancy requirement, or in other words, potential to use the house or ADU as a rental. I'm making a point specifically to cover these specifically, along with other, most other standards adopted in November. But there have been changes in state law, as mentioned by the mayor, that are important to cover here as well, which can inform council's decisions on these matters. We'll go over those, but before we get into the state law, let's recap the definition of an ADU. And this is fairly close to the definition we have adopted in our code. To differentiate a property with an ADU from a duplex, an ADU is a small secondary dwelling unit that is typically accessory to an owner-occupied detached single-unit dwelling. The word typically here is intentional, as the new state law might be changing what is typical in Iowa. The state law does appear to deal primarily with detached ADUs, or the top-left example on the graphic up on the screen. It is easier to differentiate a property with a detached ADU from a property with a duplex. Where this can get complicated is how we differentiate the internal ADU from a duplex. Thankfully, most of the rules we have for ADUs established on the interior of a home are kosher with the new state law. Governor Reynolds signed the new state law into effect on May 1st, so pretty recent, requiring jurisdictions to allow ADUs and setting forth additional requirements or restrictions for how we can or cannot handle them in our ordinance. So first and foremost, we are required to allow at least one ADU per single-family residence, including townhomes and twin homes on their own lot. Secondly, there are many ways that the authority of local jurisdictions is being limited. For instance, jurisdictions cannot limit the size to less than 1,000 square feet. Jurisdictions must allow mobile homes if placed on a permanent foundation. Height setbacks, minimum lot sizes, et cetera, cannot be more restrictive than standards applying to the principal dwelling. That's an interesting one, as we could see ADUs that are, we could end up seeing ADUs that are three stories tall where the principal home is only one story. Jurisdictions cannot require materials and design to match the principal dwelling. No additional parking requirements are permitted. So in other words, only the parking required for the principal residence may be required. Jurisdictions cannot limit the use of either the house or the ADU as a rental, so no owner occupancy requirement is allowed. Lastly, jurisdictions cannot regulate based on density standards, for instance, limiting the number of total units per acre. We don't have a lot of standards like that in our code anyway, so that's not a huge deal, but worth considering. With that, I have a couple of slides to go over the requirements of our current ordinance adopted in November and go over the necessary changes due to the state law. Just to note, the legend for this table up on the screen, the items underlined and having a green arrow on the left are those specifically in council's referral. It's the only thing I'm kind of highlighting here. And then as for other things, the text, if the text is in green, staff does not believe it requires changes based on the new state law. The text in red, however, does require changes and is in conflict with state law. So let's go over these real quick. Our ordinance currently only allows ADUs on owner-occupied properties per, and then per state law jurisdictions cannot require owner occupancy, so that will need to be changed. Our ordinance allows no more than one ADU per lot. As per the state law, jurisdictions must allow at least one per lot, so we're good there. Our ordinance limits ADUs to one bedroom. This is acceptable, as state law does not preclude a limit on the number of bedrooms. We currently limit the size to 50% of the floor area of the principal dwelling, or 800 square feet, whichever is less. State law would change that allowance up to 50% or 1,000 square feet, whichever is greater. This means that an 800-square-foot principal dwelling can have 1,000-square-foot ADU in their backyard, or a 3,000-square-foot house can have a 1,500-square-foot ADU in their backyard. So, our ordinance only allows ADUs in the rear yard as an accessory structure or within the principal, the existing principal dwelling. This is acceptable in the state code. Our ordinance has a five-foot setback and rear setbacks for detached ADUs. So, yeah, five-foot side and rear setbacks. That contrasts the more restrictive requirement for principal structures, being 10% of the lot width, you know, for side yards, for instance, or 30 feet from the rear. The general front yard setbacks also apply. State law allows jurisdictions' standards to be less restrictive, which this is, so. Our ordinance requires a permanent structure and specifically disallows wheeled or transportable structures. The state law generally requires the same, but specifically states that we must allow mobile homes if they're placed on a permanent foundation. Other things that would otherwise preclude those in our current code would have been design standards, you know, similar roof pitch, things like that. Our ordinance requires materials, windows, and design to match the principal structure, and state law specifically states that jurisdictions shall not require an ADU to match the exterior design, roof pitch, or finishing materials of the single-family residence. Separate secure entrance and paved path to the entrance is some, and is another thing we require. This is acceptable as well. Our current ordinance states that utilities may be shared. This will require some revision as state law requires separate metering, at least for electricity. So just to kind of give a quick, you know, idea what that means, there could be some solutions for having a single transmission line, but there has to be some method for metering based on the number of units on site. So, our current ordinance requires two egress windows and a basement unit. This is assuming a one-bedroom apartment where an egress window at minimum is required in the bedroom as per the building code. But the rest of the apartment and living areas may be pitch dark, at least as far as natural light is concerned. This requirement is acceptable as per state law. Lastly, our current ordinance does not allow exterior stairs with an exception of an ADU on the second story of a detached garage. This is also acceptable as per state law. With that, staff recommends code changes necessary to comply with the new state law, such as removing the owner occupancy requirement, changing the size limit to 1,000 square feet, and the other nuances that are in that, requiring separate metering and revising or removing design standards. or removing design standards. With that, we'll be happy to carry out these and any other code changes determined and agreed by council, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, start it off. I had to look at, just as a general ask for future presentations, when there's a change in the law, tell me what the law was, okay? But I think I found it. I think it's Senate File 592?
Yes.
Is that what we're talking about? My reading of it is, we don't have a lot of discretion here, and agreed, and incorporates 103A, which is the application of the state building code. I actually read it differently on whether or not on the separate utility lines, so.
Honestly, I haven't had a chance to compare the new law to.
Understood.
What we're proposing.
This is just a way of getting to my point, that obviously, because of this law, which I assume is effective July 1, I don't see a specific date otherwise referenced, we're going to have to modify our ordinance no matter what, so that it complies with the law. And so what I would ask is that we kind of have that language before us that shows that it complies with Senate File 592. We're not left with much wiggle room anyway, I don't think, and given the statute, and so I don't think we will be required to do much more. So we just need to read our, rewrite our code to comply with the law.
And then any of these would come back to us for the final approval of the actual ordinance, is correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
And maybe just for, for clarity, the, the actual ordinance or, or state, or law that they, bill that they passed, it does say specifically that we cannot require them to have separate, separate utility lines unless it is for separate metering, which is required in a different part of the code. I had to talk to the building, the building official on that one, so I just, just wanted to make sure that, that was, that was clear.
That makes sense. So it's actually somewhat of an internally inconsistent requirement.
Yes.
Okay, understand, again, why we need to rewrite the ordinance to try to deal with it, so.
Thank you, Councilor.
That happens far too often.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Question and one clarification. When you say this applies to townhomes and twin homes, is twin home a duplex? Or what's the twin home definition now?
A twin home is essentially a duplex with a lot line through the middle of it.
Oh, a lot line, okay.
So, so both the units are on their own lot. They're, they're both, we say single family detached, those would be technically single family attached, if that makes sense.
So it's not a duplex, because they're separate lots?
Correct.
Okay, kind of condoed, so to speak, or?
Yeah, they could be condoed.
I was reading the utility component. It appears to say that if full utility access can include a separate metering system, cannot be provided, then the city will require a separate utility line, right?
Right.
I mean, if we can get a meter in there to separate the usage of the two units, then we're okay. We don't force a new service from the street, let's say. Is that kind of the intention? I understand, yeah, that's what, okay. Then, the other thing that I dug into quite a bit today and other days, the two egress windows in a basement unit. The building code that's referenced in here, that accessory dwelling units shall comply, Chapter 103A specifies, and so does our inspection code, one egress window per bedroom. The other windows for natural light is specified in the code, they don't have to be egress, because our code is saying you need two egress windows. You would need two points of egress, a front door and an egress window in the bedroom, and that would satisfy current code. And I think there needs to be an adjustment here in our ADU language to reflect what the legislators are saying that you apply by the building code.
I think that's what I, I said, that we just have to rewrite it to comply, because you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
As long as it's.
Well, it wasn't in this presentation as far as an item to.
Gotcha.
Look at. So that's why. There's really a nice flow chart. Whoever put this together in staff, they did a really nice job. For the Inspection Services Division, it's a handout on the website. It takes a while to figure out where it is, but there's a yes, no, is this a new building? Yes. Is there a basement bedroom? Yes. Does it have an egress? You need one egress window. I mean, it spells it out step by step. It's really slick. And I don't know if fellow landlords have seen this before or not.
So if I can ask quick, just clarify, so you're kind of proposing to have what we're doing with the ADUs match our standard code of just the one egress, or one egress window, two egress?
According to reading of the state legislative bill that passed, we need to follow building regulations, and that's one egress window per bedroom, and not two.
It's whatever the code says, the building code?
Yeah.
That's done by the state building administrator, I think, or something like that.
And fire, fire safety code. So two points of egress. We have two egress windows. Big difference, because the door is an egress and then the window. So we want safety. We don't want anybody dying in a fire, so.
Just to check, though, that's not in that proposal, is it, for changing the egress requirement?
That's why I'm bringing it up.
That's, it's part of the discussion, of course, today. There's, I, just for, as far as staff position, whatever council decides on this, as long as we require the one egress window as per the, the state building code, you know, we're, we're okay with that.
So if I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the two pending things that we hadn't addressed through the changes required by the state law was the egress access, so looking to change it to match some of the other, if that's, I think, what you're proposing. And then the other was the number of bedrooms, number of rooms required. I think we had a limit to one bedroom, and I think what the discussion was, if we wanted to open that up to allow additional bedrooms or?
That was not in the referral.
Okay.
I don't know that, I don't remember that.
It was square, square footage was in the referral? Maybe you're getting confused.
Yeah, maybe it was the square footage.
Yeah, because when you go 50% max or 1,000, whichever is larger, I guess you could end up with two bedrooms pretty easily, but.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I mean.
Go ahead.
This law is clear, the city can do nothing more restrictive than what's in here. So whatever's allowed, we incorporate into our ordinance, and we're done.
It does, in the bill, it says we can be more.
Right.
Flexible.
It, it does say that, yeah. And, and I take that in agreement, that I think that allowing more than one bedroom would be okay. The egress stuff, obviously, I'm reading this trying to see, the more permissive, we can be more permissive, but we can't be more restrictive. It doesn't say anything about the egress window requirement, but I think that was in specific in our referral to say, we don't need to have two egress windows in the basement ADU. So I think removing that one would be good.
Yeah, then we get into a definition of what's more restrictive, what's more permissive.
Right.
Well, it's silent, we can. Chris, you mentioned the electric service is more apt to have a meter. What about gas and water? I mean, gas, you don't necessarily need it in an ADU. You can have all electrical appliances.
The, the state code is not as explicit on those points.
As far as the utility codes are saying?
Right. And our, our ADU code, as it currently stands, would allow those to be, you know, together, not separated.
Okay, so it's primary electric is the concern?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussions? So if I can clarify, just because I got a little bit of conflicting there, is, one, we are discussing, you've kind of proposed changing it to match our current egress standards, just the.
Sure.
One egress window.
Yeah.
And two points. The second, there was some of the discussion, because currently, if I understand this correctly, we do limit to one bedroom within our standards. And are we discussing wanting to get rid of that limitation?
Correct. That was the discussion before, was whether we allowed for two bedrooms in the, I think the discussion landed on, let's, let's try it as is. My argument was, we've been trying it for a year downtown and it's gone nowhere. So this is an opportunity to talk about opening it up again, since we've still seen no traction. Since we're changing the whole stinking thing anyway, why not allow two-bedroom ADUs?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, to me, if it can be 1,000 square feet, that's certainly enough room for two bedrooms.
Yeah.
As a person who lived in 250 square feet, you can plenty of room in there.
Any other discussions, thoughts? Because otherwise, we would need to look for a motion then for proposed changes if someone wants to.
An official, well, yeah, a motion and then comment.
And then we'll go to public comment.
To make it compliant with state law, but allow for two bedrooms and only require one egress in the basement.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any, well, we'll just go ahead. We just had our discussions. We'll go to the public comment if anyone would like to come speak on this. Name and address, please.
Yep, Gabe Groenhouse, Homeway Drive to Cedar Falls. I know I emailed all of you about this a while ago, and you encouraged me to come out again. I think hopefully you still have the email. Would encourage you to allow the two bedroom, especially with 1,000 square feet. I have a property. I'd be happy to walk any of you through. It's on Garden Avenue. It's a short-term rental right now. The garage in the back would be a perfect spot for an ADU. It'd be great if I could dig in and have a foundation, and the garage on top would be the exact same profile. Would be just around 1,000 square feet, could have two bedrooms easily. It would not change anything in the neighborhood except the garage is a piece of junk right now, and it'd be really nice when it's done. And we could have two short-term rentals there. It's booked almost all the time, and it's great to have those. We just had folks here for graduation. We'll have more folks coming, so would really encourage that. Some of the comments I heard before was, we haven't heard from staff that this is a problem. Well, we haven't heard from staff because nothing's been done. It's impossible to do it how it's written right now. So I would encourage what Councilman Hawbaker was saying, let's get in compliance with state code, and what Councilman Canfield was saying is, if we're going to go to two bedrooms, let's do it now. I think I saw some people shaking their head that they didn't want two bedrooms. I don't really know why. I think it would be a great thing for the community. So I'd be happy to walk anyone here, staff, council, through a real example of this and show you. We're not trying to make the neighborhood the Marriott. We're trying to add something in the garage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groenhouse. Anyone else for public comment? Name and address, please.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive. This is an exciting move to me. It solves a problem for those who can't afford housing in Cedar Falls. It's, it's a big opportunity to do that. It's also a great opportunity, in my viewpoint, for young, first-time buyers to be able to buy a house, to have a unit, that they can have some income so they can afford to live in Cedar Falls. I agree with all the things that were said as a recommendation to follow the state law, which I know we don't have a choice, but, but I'm not unhappy about that. And at least it'll give us an opportunity to see how well it does work. I think, I think it'll be a good, good addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks. Anyone else for a public comment on this tonight? All right, seeing none. Yep. Is it for this item specifically? Is it for this item specifically? Okay, well, we'll have the normal council meeting starting here in about 20 minutes. Any other one else for public comment on the ADU discussion? All right, seeing none. Bring it back to council. Any further discussion?
Just throwing a comment. The two-bedroom idea, I just thought of the parent and child situation where each could have their private room and not have to try to live in a one-bedroom unit to save money. I think that's an excellent idea to have a two-bedroom option, so.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else for, good for the cause? All right, otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that motion carries. So that is the end of our committee of the whole agenda for tonight, so we will adjourn, and we will be back here at 7:00 for tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. Thank you, everyone.